The Lemonster City Council meeting is funded in part by DeCarulous Insurance Agency at www.decarulousinsuranceagency.com.
Chairman of Legal Affairs, we have a 6:50 p.m. hearing on 24-22.
Thank you, Mr. President. Excuse me. Petition 24-22. Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, requests to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to performance guarantees for site plans. This is to ensure that all conditions of approval issued by the Planning Board for site plan are completed. A public hearing was held on January 24th, and this is an extension of that public hearing. I'd just like to weigh in initially by saying I think that work on the performance bond update is essential and certainly something that will benefit the community. I think we can all recall during even my short tenure here back last year, we had an issue in North Lemonster. And fortunately, a reputable developer ended up with the project at the end and made the betterments to the property that were lacking. I think there's roadway, some detention basin issues, and hydrants and such. So I think the intent here is appropriate and something that would definitely be beneficial. However, what I propose would be to send this back to the Planning Board and ask them to work with the city solicitor's office to get it into a draft ordinance form and get it back down to us for our consideration. And at this time, I'd like to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Badanza.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do note that the planning director is here, so it might be appropriate to have her come in. She may have some questions for us or vice versa. Would you like to have Ms. Wood join us?
Hello, Elizabeth.
Good evening.
Good evening. I sort of would echo the chairman's comments. I think this is a great initiative, and I want to distinguish this, of course, from a subdivision approval. This is site plan. We already have performance guarantees associated with subdivision approval, but we don't, apparently, with respect to site plan. And site plan can be as critical as subdivision in some cases, and certainly they're both important. And this is a great step forward to assuring that we get these, you know, plans enforced. The only thing I would say is I do echo the comments, like I said, of the chairman with I read through the submittal, and it's a great explanation of what your intent is, but it might be good to get it into ordinance form, like a draft ordinance, so we can take a look at what we're in fact going to vote on. Like, when we get to that, if we approve this without an ordinance form, we're essentially then...
You mean with section numbers? Is that what you're...
Well, with exactly the language that the ordinance would actually be. So in other words, what could happen is if we approved it the way it is, the city solicitor would put it into ordinance form, and then we'd have readings. Readings are typically pretty pro forma at that point in the process. We could change things up a little bit with the ordinance, but that typically doesn't happen. It's usually just a question. In fact, Riley, Brian Riley, the city solicitor, once told me, we don't even have to technically have readings, but we've always done it here in Lemonster. It's always been part of the custom and practice. So it's really, like I said, pretty pro forma. So I think it might be better if we got a draft of the actual ordinance. I'm sure that, you know, we could still, at that point, if we had to, tinker with it a little bit.
Did you get the attachment? You got the letter?
Yes, yes.
There's an attachment, and it's...
Yes.
It's language.
Yes.
But you want the language to be tweaked.
I think if you worked with Attorney Riley, you could get it into an actual ordinance pretty quickly.
Okay. This is our first stab at it with the planning board.
Right, right. I mean, it's well done. I have no criticism of it. It's just, I think, you know, with a very monicum of effort, you could get it into what would be the final ordinance or something close to it. And then my suggestion would be we continue the public hearing for whatever. I'm thinking that you could get that done for the next meeting and bring it back to us, and hopefully we can get it resolved.
So conceptually, what's in the draft counsel supports?
For my, I'm only speaking for myself, and the rest of the councils can weigh in. But, yeah, I...
Because it'd be helpful to have all of your feedback.
Kind of water. Could we have her come into the chambers and have a public hearing the way we normally have a public hearing?
The fact that she's on the other side of the rostam versus sitting at the table is a matter of comfort to her.
Because she could be sitting there having a conversation.
She can have a conversation from where she's sitting. That's an arcane point to be best, at best, arcane. Would you prefer to sit, or would you prefer to be at the rostam?
What does the chairman prefer?
Let her answer the question.
Where would you like to station yourself?
I can be wherever the...
Whatever you want, whatever you want. What is it that you want? You want to come in, sit down? Is that more comfortable?
I'll sit down.
Okay.
Test.
Okay, getting back to your substantive question. Yeah, I mean, for myself, I like it. I like the substance of what you put together, and I like the concept of what you want to do. So, speaking only for myself, I would say, yeah, move forward with a draft ordinance, and let's take a look at it at our next meeting.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Cormier.
Ms. Wood, I just echo with what Counselor Angelini and Counselor Badanza have both said. I think it's a very important step. My reading of it, I think you have... I think we're in the right direction. I don't see any major holes, but I agree. I think if we can get this in ordinance form now, we can move it right along. I'm sure there's other counselors that have a few questions, but I think it's an important move, and I... Mr. Chair, I would agree with you that this is something we can get in ordinance form and go from there. Thank you.
Are there any members of the council? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yeah, thank you very much, and this is through the chair to the legal affairs chairman. You know, in my experience down here, I don't remember us ever doing that, you know, having somebody petition us for a change in ordinance and then having us throw it back to them and have them work with Coleman and Page to get it in ordinance language. I mean, that's just, you know, people that have been here longer than, you know, than I have might have a different experience, but, you know, my experience, you know, we agree or don't with what the petitioner is asking for, and then we ask Coleman and Page to put it in ordinance form, and then it comes back, and then we vote on that, the first and second reading. So I'm just curious as to why the change in process.
Well, quite frankly, I don't see it as a change. I just see it as trying to streamline this, so we're not kicking it around, you know, and changing it. And I'd like to really, the ordinance to reflect what the planning board has envisioned rather than, you know, us sort of overtaking it, because if we're getting a skeleton and asked to put meat in the bones when they're more familiar with the issue. So they can, I think, better address where the shortfalls may be currently, and then it comes down to a ordinance form, and in no time, we can turn it around, and two readings, we can adopt it. Just seems to be a lot easier.
Yeah, it just seems to me to be not the way that we've done things in the past. I was just curious. It seems to me to be backwards. You know, normally, my recollection is that, you know, we approve what the petitioner's asked for, we send it to Coleman and Page, they come back with the ordinance language, and then we have the first and second reading of some, and that's fine tuning, and that's approving the fine tuned legal language that, you know, in a more conceptual way, we've already approved. So it just seems to me to be a change. I'm just curious why.
I think you'll find this to be much more painless. I think this will work. So let's give it a try.
I will defer to the legal affairs chair.
Thank you, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. I appreciate that.
If I could just hold you right there at 6:59, so in a minute, I'm going to start the meeting, and then we'll recess and resume, okay? Okay, it is now 7:00 p.m. Could you all please rise and join me for a salute to the flag?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, in the free republic of which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now I'd like to call the meeting to order for January 24th, 2022, and I will take a roll call of the members present, beginning with Counselor Badanza.
Present.
Counselor Cormier.
Present.
Counselor Ardinger.
Present.
Counselor Angelini.
Present.
Counselor Brady.
Present.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Present.
Counselor Deacon.
Present.
Counselor Frida.
Present.
I am present. All nine members are present. Does the chairwoman of records, Madam Vice President, do you have any records to report this evening?
I do. I have the records from January 10, 2022. I have reviewed them, and unless any counselors have any suggestions as to any revisions, I find them to be in good order, and I would ask that they be placed on file.
Okay. Counselor Frida?
Yeah, I just have, I think there's an omission here. I'd just like to see it, because I think it's important, and I believe it was on the discussion about birch, the two properties to demolish, and I believe the finance chair mentioned that he had done the title on one of the properties and knew for a fact that the city of Lemonster owned it. So I would like to see that that be in there, that he did the title on the property and was going to assure us that it was owned by the city.
I would take issue with what you're saying. What I said was, I looked at the record at the registry of deeds and determined that the property had been taken by, the tax title on the property was foreclosed by the city of Lemonster. I didn't do a 50-year title.
Well, I thought, I'll stand corrected if I was under the understanding that you said you did the title on it at one point.
No, I didn't do a title on it.
Okay.
Nor would it be my job.
I thought that's what...
I did look at the records.
I thought that's what you said.
I look at the records, and I determined that the property, the tax title had been foreclosed by the city of Lemonster.
Okay. Well, stand corrected. That's...
All set, Counselor Frida? Is there anybody else? Did I see the hand? Counselor Brady, did I see your hand?
Yeah, just a slight omission. Were you talking about the traffic on Mount Pleasant Ave? At the bottom, it said that I had signed that the police had begun towing vehicles. It was actually the landlords, it wasn't the police.
Oh, the landlords, okay. Does anybody else have any questions or comments on the January 10, 2022 minutes? Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
This isn't substantive, it's really, it's a typo on page eight, last paragraph there. Finance committee recommended vote by roll call of six, three, Counselor Brady, Counselor, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, so on the double page.
The second power.
Yep.
We'll have that fixed. Okay. Anybody else have anything that they noticed that they'd like to address? Seeing none, we will have the January 10, 2022 minutes placed on file with those corrections that have been mentioned. And at this point, I would ask for a motion for a recess, so we can continue the hearing. Counselor Badanza, I think I saw Counselor Ardinger next. All those in favor? Those opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, we are now in recess, and you may continue.
Thank you, Mr. President. Are there any other members of the council? Counselor Frida?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we normally do in a public hearing, you're the petitioner. I'd like to hear your opinion as to why you put this in. I know you did it on behalf of the planning board. Why did this come to us, and what was the purpose behind it? Please.
I have to say, it's an enforcement issue to make sure that what the planning board decides for site plan, all of their conditions of approval, and as the site plan, as it's approved, gets constructed and built as the board intended. We're finding in practice, staff is finding that buildings will become occupied because the building is sound and everything is done correctly according to the building inspector, but we're finding things on the site, such as detention basins, landscaping, hydrants, different things, all kinds of different site-related items have not been installed per the plan or per the agreement or per the conditions of approval. And there are no teeth, other than staff, me writing a letter saying, out of courtesy, will you please finish this project? And that doesn't hold a lot of weight for a developer. Some developers will come through and do it, but a large number of them decide that they already have their certificate of occupancy. There's no, there's no, nothing pushing them to meet, it costs them money, it costs them time to complete the condition. To the board, to the city, to, if the developer hasn't completed it, they will be incentivized to come back to get their bond money to finish the project. Or if they decide to walk away, the city will still be holding money with which to finish the project. And it's just been a practice over and over and over and over again, before my time, during my time, during my tenure, that we're running into.
And if I recall, this is how we got into trouble back in the 80s, because that was happening, and the fees in the streets weren't kept, and the streets weren't paved prior to construction.
That's subdivision.
Okay, you're talking about site plan.
I'm talking about site plan.
Okay, all right. Okay, sorry.
But it's very similar, very similar, same concept.
It's not finishing and walking away and us getting stuck with it, whatever the situation is.
Correct.
Okay. And is there a particular reason this came about?
It's been...
Was there something...
Case after case after case after case. I'm not going to name any one in particular.
No, I'm not expecting you to, no.
Multiple, and some of them go back many years and haven't been done, and we're finding out today that there are just items that weren't completed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Frida. Mr. President?
Thank you very much. I just want to, you know, thank you very much and the planning board for addressing these things, you know. I think in your short time here, we've worked together on a lot of things and, you know, a lot of problems that we've found that have happened over the years, and anything that we can pass to make sure that, you know, we're as stringent as we can be is certainly good, because there are a lot of gray areas and a lot of room for loopholes which we need to close. So I applaud, you know, all your efforts, and I agree, you know, get us something in ordinance, in ordinance form, and, you know, we can just push it right along, and we should be good, and anything we can do to help you, you know, we're here. So I think we're moving in the right direction, and that's where we need to keep going, so that we don't, we don't have any more sins of, all the sins of the past stay in the past, and we don't create any more moving forward. So thank you very much for all your hard work.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the council that would like to opine? Counselor Cormier?
I just want to echo what Council President Cormier said, is thank you for being proactive, and this is very timely. We have building season is right around the corner, and again, I think that's one of the reasons why we want to get this sent out and get it in ordinance form as quickly as we can, so that you have some, you have some teeth, so we can go into this new building season with this, and you having this in your pocket and having this enforcement. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Is there anyone else in the council that would like to weigh in? All right, Ms. Wood, I just want you to know, from now on, whenever I'm chairing a meeting, you are welcome to the inner sanctum. You don't have to wait for an invitation, all right? And again, I think it's a wonderful thing, as I mentioned in my opening. So there's nothing critical of the work product, it's just we're trying to change the process a little bit.
Okay, and we looked high and low at other municipalities in Massachusetts, and so many do not have this as a policy. So I found Amesbury, and that's where the language, we tweaked it for Lemonster, but that's where the backbone of this came from, was Amesbury. There, I sent out a message on Mass, served, there's a planning community where you can post messages and reach thousands, a thousand planners across the state and hear back from them, and I only got two responses. Is this not, Lemonster would be taking the lead and hopefully be showing other communities what needs to be done, because it's a problem throughout the state.
What we look forward to. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think there's anybody else in the room, but I think you do need a lot of the public, yeah.
Absolutely. Is there anyone in the public who would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 24-22? For the second time, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to 24-22? And for the third and final time, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of or in opposition to petition 22-24? All right, hearing none. My recommendation, Mr. President, would be to give this further time, so that we give the planning board an opportunity to meet with Coleman and Page, get this in ordinance form, and I think, I think it will be welcome, from what I'm hearing tonight, I think the council will welcome these changes. And I'd ask you to poll members of my committee.
I would just ask, Ms. Wood, if we continue this to February 14th, that's three weeks, do you, do you have enough time, or do you, would you rather us at the last meeting in February to meet and talk about this again?
I'm going to be relying heavily on Coleman and Page for this. So the process within the city, as you're probably well aware, is I have to get the mayor's approval, that can take a day or two, and then I send it off to Attorney Riley, was your recommendation. It's going to depend on his schedule.
Okay. Let's go for the 14th, yeah.
Okay.
All right, so Counselor Badanza?
Yeah, my position would be to continue the public hearing, and when we get to this later on in the calendar, to give it further time.
Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, all right, so we will give this further time and continue the public hearing. Okay?
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
All right, we are now going to hold the public forum.
Okay.
The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions. However, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. There is nobody that has signed up, so I will ask, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? If so, please step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody in the audience like to speak at the public forum? For the third and final time, would anybody like to speak at the public forum? Seeing none, I declare the public forum closed. We are now back in session, and we will move right into communications from the mayor. C-45, Madam Clerk.
C-45, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $12,000 to be made to the city council advertising expense account. This same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding advertising costs.
And C-45 is going to be referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, please.
Okay. C-45 has been given regular course. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, beginning with 25-22, and if there's no objection, can we take all these and block? They are all of a similar nature. Madam Clerk, if you want to read 25-22 through...
30.
30-22.
25-22, Diane Amidon, on behalf of Upscale Consignment, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 875 Merriam Avenue, Site 131. George Digiao, on behalf of Hanus Jewelers, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 100 Commercial Road. 27-22, Neil Abramson, on behalf of Cutiecks, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 37 Mechanic Street. 28-22, Neil Abramson, on behalf of Cutie Batutis, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 1021 Central Street. 29-22, Roger Cormier, on behalf of Crown Jewelers, request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 12 Lindell Avenue. 30-22, Susan Shalfo Zephyr, on behalf of Jenny's Helping Hand, Inc., request to renew license to deal secondhand articles at 52 Mechanic Street.
Okay, 25-22 through 30-22 are going to be referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President, and I see that the referrals are in. It looks for each and every petition. I'd ask that these be given regular course.
Okay, so 25-22 through 30-22 have been given regular course. Moving on to 31-22.
31-22, Richard M. Marshon, request to close off the following city streets and city property in downtown Lemonster to host the 29th Annual Johnny Appleseed Arts and Cultural Festival. The festival will take place on Saturday, September 24th, 2022. West Street from the intersection of Cottage Street to Main Street, Park Street from Main Street to West Street, Main Street from Mechanic Street to Merriam Avenue, Church Street to be used for EMS only, School Street from West Street to Merriam Avenue. In addition to the city streets, the festival would also include the parking lots adjacent to the city hall. The city hall parking lot and the city parking lot between the First Baptist Church and the First Church Unitarian also be reserved for the festival. The time of closure requested is from 6:00 in the morning until approximately 6:00 in the evening.
31-22 is referred to the chairman of city property.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course with referrals to the police, fire, and DPW.
Okay, 31-22 has been given regular course with a referral to the police department. Okay, 31 dash 22 has been given regular course with a referral to the Police Department, Fire Department, and Department of Public Works. Moving on to matters before the City Council, the financial report.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Counsel Freedom?
Through the Chair, to the, to the Chairman. I think it's also important, we found out one year that churches didn't know that this was happening on these dates. I think we just need to inform the churches as well to be sure there's no weddings because at one year they couldn't get through, we remember. So the churches that are affected by the closure, to just make sure that they're aware of it.
Madam Clerk, do we have that ability? I think there's three, three churches in downtown Lemonster.
The Baptist Church Congregation and Pilgrim.
Yeah, there's three and then there's one kind of on the outskirts. I can call them and I will figure out the contacts and set up either a letter or both a letter and a phone call with them to reach out.
Okay. I thought, I also thought that the, the festival organizer has notified them in the past, but if we want to as well, that's, that's fine.
I'll double check.
Okay. All right. Moving on to matters before the City Council, do we have a financial report? Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. President. We started off the year in our stabilization fund with $19,904,603. We added interest during the course of the fiscal year of $23,972. And thus far, either money that's been approved and spent or money that is on our agenda for ultimate disposition totals $3,273,998, leaving a balance of $16,654,577. I also spoke with the comptroller today relative to the issue of the state certification of our excess and deficiency account, more commonly referred to as free cash. And while we do know from our last meeting that the Schedule A has been submitted to the state for certification, we do not have any update yet from the state relative to certification. The comptroller did tell me that she would be checking this week to see if she could get a status. That's my financial report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Moving on to C dash 43. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am. C 43, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests an appropriation of $45,000 be made to the collective bargaining expense account. The same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding Police Department sick leave and vacation leave payouts. Accompanying the mayor's communication is a letter from our Chief of Police dated December 22nd, 2021. Dear Mayor, attached are two appropriation request forms. The first is for sick leave account in the amount of $15,000. The second is for the vacation leave account the amount of $30,000. Both accounts have anticipated payouts for contractual obligations relative to retirement payouts, as well as active employee buybacks for holiday time and vacation time. These numbers are our projected amounts based on known retirements and holidays. If you refer to your Munis account, this money comes out of account 1522010, which is on the first page of the Munis report. That by itself won't help you. But I did talk to the comptroller today and there are subaccounts under that particular line item. The subaccounts for the police are for vacation buyback, sick leave, and sick leave buyback. With respect to the vacation buyback, there was an appropriation of $24,000 and $30,000 has been spent. With respect to the sick leave account, there's been $17,000 appropriated and $9,000 spent. And with regard to the sick leave buyback portion of the subaccount, $37,000 was appropriated and $12,000 was spent. If my math is correct, the total appropriation in those three subaccounts was $78,000. And the amount spent thus far without the petition before you is $51,000. Those subaccounts can be mingled. It's perfectly lawful to do that. The new comptroller is trying to keep those accounts segregated as best as possible so that there is a little bit better communication and discipline with respect to the accounts. But as you can see, we've already spent a significant portion of what was appropriated in the monies for these retirements, which is going to be significant, is required in order to meet our contractual obligations under the collective bargaining agreement. In that regard, I would, it would be my position to grant C 30 43, C 43, Mr. President. And I ask you to check with my members of my committee.
Okay. Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
Counsel Angelini?
I'll make it unanimous, Mr. President.
Okay. So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash 43. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash 43 signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, C dash 43 has been granted. Does the Chairman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Ordered that the sum of $45,000 be transferred from the stabilization fund to the collective bargaining expense account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the recommendation to move for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order signify in usual manner. Those opposed?
It's a yea.
Signify by saying yea?
Yea.
Yea.
Those opposed? Okay. Do the yays have it? Nine to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C dash 44. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. C 44, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, request an appropriation of $250,000 be made to the Fire Department overtime account. The same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund regarding Fire Department overtime. We have a letter from the mayor sending the communication to us dated January 5th. The supporting material from the fire chief is dated the same date. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, the Fire Department requests the sum of $250,000 for overtime costs. I'm requesting this amount to be transferred at the discretion of the comptroller's office. Overtime spent to date is related to normal contract obligations, department operations, six recruit, six recruit members in the Fire Academy, military activations in drills, multiple members on long-term sick leave, duty injuries, one member on administrative leave, and shift coverage for multiple COVID-19 related illnesses and quarantines, along with normal vaccines, I'm sorry, vacancies, i.e. sick personnel and vacation time. Thank you for your continued support. Should you have any questions or concerns, please feel free to contact me at any time. Sincerely, Robert A. Sidlow II, Chief of the Fire Department. As you can see from the chief's letter, there's a whole lot of stressors on Fire Department overtime. That line item in our Munis report is 22030000, found on page two. Original appropriation for the fiscal year was $1,200,000. Spent through the date of this Munis report, $1,135,014.66, leaving $64,985.34. 94.6% of the fund appropriated. This is consistent with our past practices. We don't typically fund the, or appropriate for Fire Department overtime, all of it in the statutory budget, typically add to it during the course of the year. This is consistent with that. Obviously, we have the need and as you can tell from all the things going on in the world today, it's even more acute this year. So it would be my position, Mr. President, to grant C dash 44.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll check with members of your committee. Counsel Cormier?
I agree.
Counsel Angelini?
Well, in light of the fact that the chairman dug into those subaccounts, I certainly want, want to be in favor of this as well.
Okay. It looks like unanimous recommendation to grant C dash 44. Is there any discussion? Counsel Freedom?
Not really a discussion, but this isn't going to be the last we see of overtime with things going on. I'd like to have the fire chief and the police chief come in just to get an update with COVID and the things that have been going on, just to see what conditions are in. I mean, he had a, just relayed a litany of issues that are, he's concerned of. I'd like to get an update on, on both departments and see what they think the future is going to hold, how long this is going to last, and have a conversation with them for the public safety. I mean, I certainly support it, but I think I'd like to get a, a little bit of a future thought from both chiefs.
Perhaps under new business, we can take a vote to bring them down during another discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C dash 44 signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, Madam Clerk, may the record reflect that I must abstain. I have an immediate family member on the department. Does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, ordered that the sum of, I'm sorry, ordered the sum of $250,000 be transferred to the Fire Department overtime account. Same to be appropriated from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the recommendation for the adoption of the order. All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea.
Yea.
Those opposed, by a vote of eight to zero, the order has been adopted. Moving on to items under Legal Affairs, 20 dash 22. Mr. Chairman, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. Thank you. 2022, Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinances pertaining, excuse me, to the public parking of unregistered vehicles regarding overflow lots. We had public hearing on January 10th. It was continued. We are waiting for referrals from the planning, from, excuse me, from the Billing Inspector, as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals. This matter is on our agenda for our next meeting, February 14th at 6:50, continuation of this public hearing. So I would ask at this time for further time.
Counsel Badanza?
I'm in agreement.
Counsel Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to give 20 dash 22 further time. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving 20 dash 22 further time signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, 20 dash 22 has been given further time. Moving on to 24 dash 22.
Thank you, Mr. President. 24 dash 22 is Elizabeth Wood, on behalf of the Planning Board, request to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining to performance guarantees for site plans. This is to ensure that all conditions of approval issued by the Planning Board for site plan are completed. As you know, we had Ms. Wood here this evening. She gave an ample description of what these amendments will be. It's an enforcement vehicle for the Planning Board to ensure that these projects are built out and promises are kept and the money is available after the fact should developers abandon the project. As you know, we asked that they work with Coleman and Page to hammer out a, a draft ordinance for, get it back to the council for our consideration. So I would, and we also, by the way, have continued the public hearing, February 14th at
At 6:45 is what you're suggesting, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
6:45?
6:45. So my recommendation would be further time and continuing the public hearing.
And continuing the public hearing to February 14th, 2022 at 6:45 PM.
Correct.
Okay. And I'll check with Counsel Badanza?
Yes, I'm in accord with that.
Counsel Cormier?
I agree.
Okay. All those in favor of giving 24 dash 22 further time and continuing the public hearing to February 14th, 2022 at 6:45 PM. Is there any discussion?
Yeah.
Counsel Badanza?
I just want to reiterate something I said during the public hearing. The, obviously the intent of this is great and I'm, it's really good to see that our planning boards on the cutting edge of this definitely needed legislation. But with respect to the sort of process, I don't think the readings, first or second reading is really the appropriate place to be hammering out the niceties of the ordinance. That really should be done up front and it should be part of our process when we pass it. And although there's really good information the Planning Director presented to us, it, it's not in ordinance form and it really needs to be. It's really not, I don't, I don't perceive our duty to be draftsman of these ordinances. We certainly have the ability to weigh in and we should weigh in on what it is we want. Looking at what the Planning Director presented to us, I think it's all appropriate and makes perfect sense. But in, in my opinion at least, it's not in ordinance form. I think that can be done pretty, pretty efficiently and quickly with our city solicitor's office and hopefully we'll have it for the next meeting and we can move forward on it.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes, I, I had raised the issue of the change in process because I don't recall ever treating another petition that's come down in the same way. We've never sent, whether it's, you know, Planning Board on other issues, because we've passed plenty of changes to ordinances for the Planning Board. So my comment was really about the change in the process because this is a change in process.
I, I, to the Chair, to the Counsel at large, I don't really perceive it as a change in process. Every one of these is sort of sui generis. We've had proposed ordinances come down from the Planning Board that were delete and add, right, perfectly in ordinance form, which we didn't have to do anything more than, than pass judgment on. And we've had very complicated ordinances, for instance, the marijuana ordinance that was drafted through sort of committee approach with myself, the planning, Mr. Souza, Attorney Riley, the Planning Director at the time. You know, so each one of them has a little different flavor to it, in my opinion. This, this one, you know, as I said, maybe it is different. I don't know. But it's not an ordinance form. And I don't really think it's appropriate, my opinion again, to be sort of hacking through that at the readings. I think we need to do that up front. And I applaud what the Director's done thus far. But I think with Brian Riley's help, she can get that into ordinance form pretty quickly. We'll have a clear understanding of what we're voting on. When it comes down to us for the reading, it will be what it's supposed to be pro forma and we'll be done with it. So that's just, that's just the way I feel about it.
Counsel Freedom?
I respectfully disagree with that. You know, to cite the marijuana committee approach, that was a brand new ordinance. They're asking for an amendment here, which is a little bit different. We have passed a ton of things in this council that a counselor will bring forward and we passed it, we go as far as passing before we even get to the ordinance form. A lot of the things that come before us from a counselor, we support the, the concept and then it goes to the city solicitor to draw the ordinance. I mean, it should, that same approach should be taken to anybody else that comes before us. How would, why would we expect the Planning Board to be, draw a legal ordinance? Why would they not be able to deal with Attorney Riley the same way we do? I mean, it was brought to, to their attention. They worked on it. They brought it to us. I'm not saying we should have passed it. I'm not saying I disagree. But I mean, I think, you know, the approach that we're taking, like, this is a whole new idea. It's not. I mean, we've been doing this for a long time. Look at, look at every stop sign ordinance. Does anybody come in here with an ordinance already ready to approve? No. It comes in here with a suggestion to amend it and then it goes to the attorney to draw it up. So I, I mean, I, I, I think it is a little bit different that, the way we're doing it right now.
Okay. Is there any other discussion? Counsel Badanza?
Well, I'm glad, through the Chair, I'm glad you mentioned the issue of traffic because that is to me totally different. I mean, I submitted a few in ordinance form because it's not rocket science to do that. But, you know, passing an ordinance for a traffic matter, I think it's, it, there's only a few ways to draft it. So quite frankly, that's not a big issue. But this is important. There's a lot of detail in there and I see it differently. So, you know, if it was, if it was a relatively minor thing, we're, we're going to get tripped up on the language itself, I would say, ah, maybe different. But I, I think you got to go case by case. And in this particular instance, I just think it's a safer alternative. I think, you know, it's the Planning Director's job to be drafting this with assistance of counsel, not our job to be drafting ordinances. So if it was, like I said, something that was relatively minor in nature and there wasn't going to be a big divergence between the petition and the actual ordinance, I'd feel totally different about it. So I think we got to view it on a case by case. I appreciate your comments and I understand. I think it's a good discussion, but that's how I feel about it.
Any other discuss, Counsel Freedom?
Through the Chair. Thanks for minimizing, you know, the importance of one ordinance to another. The point is you're changing the process. There is a change. And whether it's a stop sign or it isn't, who's going to make the decision whether this is more important than something else by the person that brings it before us? I mean, don't minimize what I just said. I mean, I'm making a point that the process changed and it is different. You're doing things differently on one thing to another. You want to change the way we do things now, then that's fine. But bring it before us and give the rest of us a, a little bit of a hint of what, what the plan is.
Is there any other discussion? You're welcome. On 24, Counsel Badanza?
I'm not minimizing a thing. This is before us now. You know, we're all entitled to a vote. And we have a recommendation from the committee. You know, we're all entitled to a vote, and we have a recommendation from the Committee. I mean, it's the function of the Council as a whole to go forward with this. So I'm not minimizing anything. The fact that we address these on a case-by-case basis, I mean, just because something was done a hundred times the same way doesn't mean it's right. My process is that this is an important ordinance, it's huge, it's very important. And I think before we start tinkering with it at the reading stage, we ought to have an ordinance that we can look at and understand and be ready to vote on. If you differ with my opinion or the opinion of other Councils, that's your prerogative, but that's how I think.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of giving twenty-four dash twenty-two further time and establishing a hearing, or continuing, sorry, continuing a hearing to February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two at six forty-nine, at six forty-five P.M., please signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, that hearing continuation date and time has been established, and this has been given further time. Moving on to items under new business, I don't see any. Is there any new business to come before the City Council? Counsel Brady?
Yeah, just kind of a clarification. In doing the second-hand dealers licensing, I'm just curious why that's a function of us and not the License Commission.
That's, it's been that way for a very, very long time. I know pool tables used to be our function. We had a vote, a petition and a vote to give it back to the License Commission, but that's been our function for, since I've been here, so.
Okay.
Is it match general law? And do we have to, by match general law, keep it, or is that an option?
By our charter, we can give it to any agency, and we can take it back at any time.
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, is that correct?
Yeah, I was just letting him know the reason why we have it is because it's in our ordinance that way, and it's a match general law that the legislative body votes on them and is the keeper of their record. So in some cases, that's a board of selectmen in the town manager's office, which also tends to be the Licensing Commission, and then in other cases, it's us in a city environment, but it's changeable potentially.
Yeah, it was just, it seemed odd to me that we were doing that, but not other licenses.
We have a couple odd ones that we get yearly. You'll see theater licenses and bowling soon as well.
Okay, is there any other new business to come before the City Council? Seeing none, we have a couple of items under old business. The first, I'm sorry.
It's my one call to fire.
Oh, the Fire and Police Chief, do you want to take a vote to have them come in?
That's old business, isn't it?
Old, new, whatever you, whatever you want.
I guess it's old because there's something on the agenda. I don't get where it.
We can, we can do it under old if that's where you're more comfortable. Okay, so we have some old business on the agenda. First item is the first reading of an ordinance, twenty-one dash twenty-two. Mr. Chairman of Legal Affairs, are you ready to report?
I am, Mr. President. It's the first reading of an ordinance, twenty-one dash twenty-two. Julio Ramos, Traffic Officer, Leominster Police Department, request to amend Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash twenty-four of the revised ordinance entitled "No Parking on Certain Streets," to be amended by inserting the following text: Mount Pleasant Ave, Easterly Side, from a point beginning at twenty feet from the intersection with Mechanic Street to a point of seven-hundred-and-sixty feet from the intersection with Pine Street. And again, this is regarding firefighting vehicles inability to maneuver with parking on both sides of the street. We had a public hearing back on January tenth, and this, I would recommend that we adopt the first reading of this ordinance.
And I'll poll with members of your committee.
Poll members of my committee, please.
Counsel Badanza?
I'm in favor.
Counsel Cormier?
I agree.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the first reading of an ordinance for twenty-one dash twenty-two. Is there any comment or discussion? Seeing none, I will do this by roll call, beginning with Counsel Badanza.
Yea.
Counsel Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel Arndger?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Brady?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Deacon?
Yea.
Counsel Frida?
Yea.
And I will be recorded as yea by a vote of nine to zero. The first reading of twenty-one dash twenty-two has been adopted. Moving on to the next item, we have a notice to appear for an establishment of a hearing, and this is going to be referred to the Chairman of Legal Affairs.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. Before I begin, I just want to caution members that we have to, the discussion has to pertain to the scheduling of this hearing. We can't get into any of the potential facts. We are in possession of a report from the Fire Department about an incident that occurred in, excuse me. We also have a legal opinion from Brian Riley at Coltman and Page about the Council's jurisdictional authority to ask the licensee to come in and answer some questions regarding this matter. And at the same time, we'd certainly like the Chief of the Fire Department to be present to also answer questions. And I would certainly be in favor of scheduling a public hearing for February fourteenth at six-thirty P.M., and I would ask you, poll members of my committee, Mr. Chairman.
Sure. Counsel Badanza?
I'd be in favor of issuing the notice to appear.
Okay, and Counsel Cormier?
I support that as well.
Okay, is there any other discussion on this item? Counsel Frida?
What exactly is the public hearing?
What is the public hearing?
Yeah. Why is it being labeled a public hearing and not informational?
We're going to have a hearing, a public hearing, to ask, answer, have questions answered about the incident.
Okay, I'd be very careful.
Okay, is there any other comments, questions, discussion? Okay, all those in favor of establishing this hearing on February fourteenth, twenty-twenty-two at six-thirty P.M., I think I'm going to do this in roll call vote, beginning with Counsel Badanza?
Yea.
Counsel Cormier?
Yea.
Counsel Arndger?
Yea.
Counsel Angelini?
Yea.
Counsel Brady?
Yea.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr?
Yea.
Counsel Deacon?
Yea.
Counsel Frida?
I'm going to be abstaining from this.
Okay, and I will be recorded as yea by a vote of eight to zero. I'm sorry, Madam Clerk? Madam, Counsel Frida, the clerk is asking me the reason for your abstention, so it can be noted.
Possible conflict?
Okay.
Not the likes we do, Richard. Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right, so by a vote of eight to zero, this hearing has been established of February fourteenth at twenty-twenty-two at six-thirty P.M. Madam Clerk, if you would, please make sure that you inform the Fire Chief that he has been invited down with his vote, and also have a certified letter go out to the licensee to appear. Moving on to items under the community calendar, I see none.
Clear as matter.
Oh, yes, that's right, Fire and Police, you still want to bring them down? Obviously, we have the Fire Chief coming down that day anyway, so that might be convenient. We can just maybe take a separate vote. What time should we have him in? It's maybe six-fifteen?
Yes, please.
Six-fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, is that okay, Counsel Frida? We'll have a vote to bring the Fire and Police Chief in here for six-fifteen P.M. on February fourteenth. Is there any discussion about that? All those in favor of bringing the Fire and Police Chief in on February fourteenth at six-fifteen P.M. to talk about the ongoing COVID issues, is that what you're looking for, Counsel Frida, COVID?
Yes.
And overtime, where we're going with the whole?
Just a general overview of everything that's happening to the departments.
Okay, all those in favor signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, they will be asked to come in here at six-fifteen on February fourteenth. There are no items in the community calendar. Counsel Frida?
I don't know if it's under the community calendar or not, probably not, but through the Chair, to the Finance Chair, some communities are forming citizen committees to look at ways to spend the oppo money that's coming into communities. Could you check to see if there's any intent in Leominster of having any kind of a committee put together to do that?
I haven't talked to the mayor specifically about that, but I could, I could check with the mayor.
I don't know, I haven't had a chance to check to see how many, but I know a couple of them have. The City of Worcester just initiated that in this past week, just to see where, get a different grasp on some of the suffering that was done during the pandemic for money to be distributed, so.
Yeah, we probably all recall the mayor coming down and giving us a pretty specific overview of where we stood with that and the type of plans that he was formulating. I could certainly approach him and ask him.
I just, I think it would be a good idea to get, to get, not just from the department heads, but from the general public.
Okay, I will, I'll broach the issue with him.
I also have one other thing.
Sure.
Going back to the clerk's request for twelve thousand dollars, could we get a list of all the recent ordinances, say, last year?
Yeah.
And an itemization of what it costs, first is the cost for the public hearing, then there's the cost for the ordinance after in the paper, right? Am I correct on that?
Yeah.
So if we could get a cost, and then the cost of, for the attorney to do the ordinance before it's published on any requests that come in. So if we could get a list of the new ordinances.
Yeah, I can give you, I have a list already. I can get you, do you want copies of all the bills? Do you want just a spreadsheet I can make you? Because it varies.
However you want to do it, I want to get a sense as to what one, to be able to summarize it, what one ordinance costs. If we want to put a stop sign up on a particular street, how much does it cost to advertise the public hearing? How much does it cost to send it to the City Solicitor after we approve it? How much does it cost to publish it, the ordinance, after it's approved to tell the public we did it?
Okay.
So those three things, individual cost each, and then maybe a total cost. Obviously, if you're short on twelve thousand, it's only mid-year, so.
Yeah, the ward and precinct ordinance costs four thousand dollars for the public hearing and another four thousand to publish, so it wiped my budget out for the year.
Right. Well, I think it's something we need to know before we, before we vote.
Yeah, and then, so I'll get that, that's no problem at all. I have it all settled. I'll do probably the next cell sheet, so it's easier, because otherwise you're going to have a staff this big. And then I can contact the mayor's office and KP Law for an itemization for time. I haven't seen a bill for KP Law, and I don't know how long, no matter how many times I ask, but I'll try again.
Could you, while we're on that subject, could you, I know in the past they would provide at least a copy to the Finance Chair, and you would distribute it to the Council in general. Could we see if we could get that reinstituted?
Okay, are there any other items under the community calendar? Seeing none, do I have a motion to adjourn? Counsel Badanza, Counsel Cormier, all those in favor of adjourning signify in usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to zero, we are now adjourned. Thank you all very much.